Meeting ordered. This is the work session for February the 8th, 2011. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments and Alderman Barnhill.
I would like to read one item into citizen's comments on behalf of the citizen. And this is the note that she has given me. Says, "I was visited by Mr. Ben Worley and Mr. Gary R. Sandifer, February the 4th, 2011, for an offer to acquire road property on 918 Hillsborough Road. Mr. Worley advised me there will be seven lanes on Hillsborough Road from Mack Hatcher to Claude Yates. Then it will start three lanes with a turn lane into Franklin High School. I had been led to believe there would be three lanes with a turning lane into Franklin High School in the past. Peggy G. Huey, 918 Hillsborough Road, Franklin, Tennessee." And I agreed to read that into the minutes and it's a public comment. And I will give this note two hours, minutes.
And we have one other citizen comment.
That's Ryan Echols. I'm actually representing Technical Bank on item that's on your agenda for the meeting tonight, but it's not on your agenda for the work session. It's item 11, it's first reading of Jameson Station fee issue.
It's on here, actually. Is that item 14 on the work session?
Uh-oh.
I'm sorry.
No. We have to act.
He would miss land.
It's all right. Ryan Stanwyck. Okay, we're going on to number three. Is there any other citizen comments?
Mayor, I did have a request.
Sure.
I'd like to follow up with Ms. Huey's comment on Thursday's meeting when we have the update on streets and status. Because I don't remember.
That's not exactly the line.
I don't remember.
Yeah.
I certainly hope we didn't approve anything like that. And I don't think that that, I hope that that information is not accurate.
Yeah, we'll share that with Ms. Huey and the CIC committee as well. That's not exactly the right alignment.
So as a further comment, then, Ms. Huey probably needs to be here Thursday. Is the meeting four?
Four o'clock.
You need to be here four o'clock on Thursday and we'll further discuss the item that I just read.
And we'll take it up, let's take it up first if we're gonna have, if there are people here interested in that, then we'll take it up first because otherwise it comes at the very end. And we typically take things out of order when there are people here for it. Or sometimes we do.
No other citizen comments? We'll move on then to item number three, presentation by Franklin Tomorrow, Community Vision and Strategic Plan Revisioning Process. Different hat.
Yes.
A green hat.
And a green tie. Wow, there we go.
But we lack color.
Who's leading off?
Well, I'm gonna lead off. I'm Mindy Tate and I have the best job of any organization, and that is past president of Franklin Tomorrow. As we know, past president is the best job you can have. But we wanted to come to the board, and this is Dan Ryan, who is the 2011 president of Franklin Tomorrow's Board of Directors. And we wanted to come to you and give you an update sort of of what's been going on and where we're headed. So Dan, I follow your notes too, just we'll share those. We, I served as president for three years and in the 2010, we began the process and each of you were given a brochure, and we have some extra copies of it, of the vision strategy refocus. This is a project started in 2010 and will really be completed and worked on, I can't use the word completed, will be ongoing throughout 2011. And it's really an ongoing process for the work that needs to be done. Franklin Tomorrow was, is 10 years old. We are, have been in existence since 2001. And back in 2001, we had thousands of citizens who participated in focus workshops as well as a visioning fair and other activities and have had participation throughout the 10 years of existence. To focus on the nine strategy group, strategy areas of Franklin Tomorrow, there are goals and strategies, goals and then strategies to which are accomplished those. And so you have before you the nine strategy groups with express purpose to accomplish the following with respect to each goal. And we won't read that before you, but we wanted to bring that to you so you were aware. We have asked board members at Franklin Tomorrow and then a co-chair as a non-board member in most instances in all nine of these groups to form a committee to begin to study the goal, which is what you see here, and the strategies by which that goal is accomplished. There's a different group working that is forming a metrics and matrix to measure the, some of the results there found, and we're just beginning the work there. But we wanted to bring this to you so the two of us were aware of the work that was being done in that area. And then we are also preparing for you and hope to have that in March or April, a decade report that will talk about the work that Franklin Tomorrow's been involved in in the community over the past decade and the work that we hope to be involved in in the future. But it's always the work of the citizens. Our group brings forth the voice of the citizens. That's our goal and our hope. So our decade report will focus on that. And then I would say just highlights from the past year. We feel like we've really have gotten strengthened a connection between the business community and government through the breakfast with the mayors that was started thanks to the support of Craig Holland and, I don't wanna say the name of his bank, but I don't wanna say the wrong name of his bank. How about that? First Farmers and Merchants. I wouldn't wanna say the wrong name of his bank.
I did that on the air once.
Yeah. But that, those will be continuing. Thank you to Mayor Moore and to Mayor Rogers Anderson who have again agreed to continue that process. And there will be three breakfasts held in 2011. But that's in Dan's ear, so I'm gonna let Dan talk a little bit about what's coming up for him.
Again, it's a pleasure to be here. Many had mentioned the breakfasts, and those have been a tremendous opportunity for members of the community to come together and really get a glimpse of what's going on. And we appreciate the support the city has given to that enterprise. Also, we're going through some other change at Franklin Tomorrow. We're going through a search for a new executive director. And our current executive director Natalie Dodd-Witten during the last year has made some changes and she's gotten married. And now they're getting ready to start a family. And Natalie and her husband have talked and they decided that this life stage is really gonna be focused on raising their family. And so as a result, Natalie has chosen to resign her role and she'll be with us through the end of April, at least on a part-time basis. So we're currently conducting a search which will be kicking off this week. And we have a great search committee. Kathy Moore, Clyde Ingles, Miles Mennel, Wania Patton, Susan Miner and myself will be leading that search committee. So certainly as good corporate citizens, if you know of someone that you could refer to us, please let us know that. But I suspect we'll have no shortage of qualified candidates for that role. Other than that, I don't know of anything else, but we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
We'll give you some specific dates as well. The breakfast with the mayors will be March 17th, June 7th, and September 20th. Those dates have all been marked on the mayor's calendars and agreed to, and the committee is working on the topics for those. And then July 12th will be our Franklin Tomorrow Shrimp Boil where we present the Auntie Rutherford community, exemplary community volunteer awards. And that's something that we're really proud to be able to do and honor Auntie Rutherford and her community commitment. So those are just some dates that you'll wanna mark on your calendar, but we're happy to answer any questions about what's going on with Franklin Tomorrow.
Questions?
The mayor's breakfast are March 17th, June 7th, and September 20th. And so the topics and locations on those will be announced.
Thank you all a lot.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate what you do. Next, item four, consideration of event permit applicable, application for Battle of Franklin Anniversary at Harlinsdale Farm on October 15th and 16th, 2011. And, welcome.
Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Well, we have an application that has gone to the Special Event Action Team Committee before you. Last year, the event was called Civil War Days. It was held at the park at Harlinsdale Farm. This year, this summer, they have chosen to call it the Battle of Franklin Anniversary, again to be held at the Harlinsdale Farm. And I do believe there's two representatives here from the organization. Let them introduce themselves.
Evening, I'm Don. Joe Grossan, representing the reenacting community. And I'll be the overall commander of the military reenactors at the event, as I was last year and the year before that.
Eric Jacobson, operations director for the Battle of Franklin Trust.
And I believe these, Eric will take the role that Jen Estert took last year, is that right, Eric?
Largely.
Will take the role in guiding the event. And then, of course, the general here will take the role of the troops. But I believe the committee's recommendations for the event are in the paperwork.
Any questions?
This was an extremely successful event last year. I mean, fourfold better than what we really expected as far as attendance. And the response we had for most of the reenactors was extremely positive and said that they will be back and there will be more that will be here this year. So this looks like it's gonna be a very viable event that we'll hold, you know, for the next few years. We do need to look at some of the parking access in need for us because that was kind of a problem this last year on getting to the back parking lot. So if we could work on that, I think it might get even more successful than last year.
Might have been the guys parking them.
Could be.
Michael's one of the directions that they're in. Thanks a lot.
No, I said this is a great opportunity to bring citizens out to our Harlinsdale Farm and a great event. So I encourage you all to continue to do these kinds of things. And of course, our citizens need to come out and support this.
This was probably the greatest attendance at Harlinsdale since.
They estimated somewhere between 12 and 1,500 each day on Saturday and on Sunday. So yes, it was the largest event since we opened Harlinsdale's park.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is consideration of ordinance 2010-80, an ordinance to establish a special assessment for the sanitary sewer improvements in the Monticello subdivision area, establishing a public hearing of March the 8th, 2011. And Mr. Gardner?
I'll go ahead and start us off.
Okay, go ahead.
Just wanted to follow up, there are a number of questions that the board asked two weeks ago or that we heard from citizens. We attempted to address those in the memo you received and attachment to the memo. I'll just run through a couple of those issues quickly and then we'll be glad to discuss anything else you'd like further clarification on or additional discussion. We looked at providing you with four cost options based on what was discussed and to determine those specific elements. And if, as you look at this and you look at first reading tonight, you can look at these dollar amounts that are on here as options one, two, three, and four. The first option being the cost as previously directed, which included the construction, the engineering, and the other bond issuance and other costs associated that was the previous direction of the board. We've looked at one that would eliminate the engineering cost, which is $143,000. Then there was the trench repair paving cost, which is estimated at $325,793. And then there is the opportunity to combine both of those costs in terms of if you chose to eliminate those costs as well. So that's what we comprised as those four cost options for you. The staff continues to recommend the first option, which is the cost as previously directed. And just wanted to run through a couple other issues with you. The waiver of system development fees had been raised, and that's one that we have to this point in all but one assessment district chosen to waive the access fee component, which is over $2,000 per resident. I think it's $2,363 actually per resident. This additional waiver, the remaining access fees or system development fees is about And that would have an implication of an additional cost waived and therefore put on the remaining of the ratepayers of about $255,204. If we look at expanding that further into all of the assessment districts that have been done, if we apply that approach to all those, that's over $770,000 of additional waived fees that would need to be borne by the ratepayers overall. And I think, you know, we talked a little bit about the policy rationale that I think is behind that and that the access fee component deals with the access lines and the system development more deals with the capacity, treatment capacity. And that's why the one portion has been waived and the other hasn't. And we've been consistent in that in most of the other areas. Question around Simmons Ridge project was raised and we tried to address that as best we could in terms of, it is a different project. It is a system improvement project that extends sewer service out to a wider range of the city. It's an interceptor sewer, it's not a specific neighborhood sewer. And that when the various developments take place in that area, those developments will pay for the neighborhood sewers that will go into place. They will pay the full cost of the various tap fees and access fees, and all that will be basically incorporated into the development costs that those individual residents pay for a lot or for a home. And so it really is not an apples-to-apples comparison in terms of the type of projects that they are. It is not extending sewer in a specific neighborhood to a series of residences. It's expanding the sanitary sewer system to serve an entire section of the community. We have looked at the additional pump and survey issue. We have met with all the residents that we know of that have concerns on that, and all of our estimations show that they will be able to be served by gravity sewer from the first floor. Not sure that additional surveying at this point, you know, it would be an additional cost to potentially add into the assessment if the board so chose to do so. But we, at this point, feel that, you know, that might be better done at the time that hook in is necessary to see. But all evidence that we've looked at and looking pretty closely at individual residences is that that first floor gravity service goal is gonna be in reach. I did look at the lien issue, the lien assignment issue. And legal counsel looking at this and consulting also with some real estate counsel on this has advised that the thought of using a temporary waiver of the lien is not advisable, but that we can write the lien in such a way that it's assignable, which I think gets us to the same place that if the parties agree to it, it can be done. But that's gonna have to be something that's agreed to by the two separate parties in a real estate transaction. And we can write it in such a way that the lien that is in place is assignable to successors, heirs, or others that are assigned to it. So we think that that can still reach the goal that provides that opportunity to individual property owners when they might be selling their property. There's a very lengthy discussion in here about how the assessment, reassessment process works, but essentially by state law, we are required to do a reassessment calculation each year based on the relative value of the properties, and that would take place. Once a property is paid off, they're lien in full, they're no longer subject to that, that property's essentially pulled out of that calculation. And that's just how that works per the state law that we have there. So I've tried to go through the primary questions that we heard last time that we've addressed in more detail in the memo, but give you sort of a quick overview of each of those issues. And we're glad to answer any other questions you have at this point.
Just a very small question on the sewer assessment districts. It says the assessor performs assessments annually. Is that our, is that the city as the assessor? It doesn't mean the county.
It means the property assessment that we get on property values from the county assessor.
Okay. They reassess every year?
There's a calculation every year. There's a full reassessment every five. So, because there can be a reassessment based on improvements to a property or.
Oh, sure. I understand that.
So.
But that would mean a change in its status, really, not an overall assessment.
It typically doesn't change.
Much of anyone.
Much if at all, except for that five-year recalculation. But it does get, it does get reassessed every year technically, but the full reassessments every five.
Other comments? Questions?
This is on our voting agenda tonight.
This is on the first reading tonight. And we would set the public hearing for a month from now on March 8th.
Are there any citizen comments? How many people want to make a comment? Do you know who this? Okay, we'll limit the time on those, so go ahead, sure.
Hello again, I'm Jay Wade, and I don't speak for anybody but myself. And in the memorandum that came out with the four options on it, there was a note in there that Monticello has not been required to provide the sanitary sewer required to bring service to their subdivision. Well, that's true. That line was put in many years ago across the front of the subdivision, not 200 feet from my property. But we weren't allowed to hook on until we agreed to be annexed. And the only way we could hook on was with an expensive gravity sewer system. Now, I know the board wants to have a uniform policy with dealing with all these different assessment districts. And I think that's a good thing. I wish we'd had one when we started, it would alleviate a lot of trouble. But what I see now is that that policy may be in conflict with some of the things that Monticello was always told, particularly with engineering fees and the connection fees. And everybody talks about being fair. Well, fair to the ratepayers, fair to the taxpayers, fair to the other assessment districts, and fair to Monticello. And if I might, I'd like to tell you what I think is fair. If you take our current assessment, that option one, and it's $1,195,000, and you add back in the asphalt resurfacing that went on through the subdivision, now that was the entire subdivision, including streets that didn't have any construction, the entrances and everything else. You add all that back in, that's $1.4 million. Now, we'd always been told, and I know some of the other assessment districts don't have the engineering fees included, you take that out. And then the city had already agreed to spend up to $450,560 to help defray the cost of our expensive sewer system. You take that off, that leaves $814,200. And to me, that would be fair for the assessment district. Thank you for your time.
Explain the $450,000.
I think in the.
Is that the repaving, resurfacing?
One of the, one of the cost estimates, it had paving at $450,000.
And it came in at 212.
It gave me the clue.
Well, that $450,000 was from Smith Secundary Reed's estimate, and I've got it here somewhere buried.
Is it the research, is it the paving?
It was for paving, and I asked the engineering what was included in that. And they did not know what was or was not included in that figure. But it is a much larger figure than the, as I said previously, that's $45 a linear foot. And the current figure is $17 a linear foot. Now, what I think it is was a bid to mill and repave the entire street. By milling means pull up all the old asphalt like they do in the interstate and put down a fresh layer. But here, they didn't mill, when they finally built the, our sewer, they put the narrow swath of pavement in the middle, and they didn't mill off all the old pavement, and they just put that thin layer back over the top. So if you go around the neighborhood, we've got drop-offs about 10, 12 inches at some point off the edge of the pavement. I can live with that, but if you'll give us that $450,000. Thank you.
The actual paving cost was $212,000.
$212.
For the.
For the resurfacing.
For the resurfacing.
Yes.
Not, not, not including where we went in the trench, then we took those costs out.
That was a project cost.
That's a project cost.
And the $212 has not been included in the 1.195.
Correct.
Go ahead.
I'm Donna Rand, president of Monticello Homeowners Association. And I just have questions about the email I sent out this afternoon. I apologize, it was rather late. But the additional, when will these other items be discussed, I guess, is what I really wanna know.
You mean the four options?
Well, the, well, that, yes, that's one thing. But then the additional waiver of the fees, the fact that we were told that everything that could be waived by state law would be waived?
I think I said I would support that.
So does that mean, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the process. Does that mean you're gonna make a motion?
I think that I will.
Okay, so maybe I should just not say anything else and wait and see. Well, I mean.
I don't know if there's gonna be more than one vote for it. I'm not, I'm not in charge.
Okay.
So go, tell me what you meant by all the fees that can be.
Well, the, the connection fees and the system development fees.
Both?
Yeah.
What about the engineering design costs?
I think the engineering should come out because we took it out of.
I agree.
We took it, I mean, that to me is the easiest one. After that, those of you that have watched for the last 14 years know, I'll tell you exactly, I mean, I'll be honest to a fault. The engineering fees, I think, are the easiest ones to resolve because we've taken them out of others. And I understand that sometimes we had kind of a hybrid city project and sewer project, but we clearly removed the engineering fees out of all of the others.
We did not in Hooper Lane.
Okay. Hooper Lane was, I mean, I want consistency in these things. Having said that, Hooper Lane was a little different. It was a much smaller scale scenario with much, with far fewer numbers of rate pay, of affected citizens. I think the engineering fees should come out. I mean, that, that to me is the strongest case for modifying these numbers. After that, we have waived the connection fees for everybody, and this number reflects the 1.195 that we're sitting on now pending motions and votes. 1.195 reflects waiver of connection fees, but not waiver of system development fees. Okay? There's a difference. The connection fee is you and you alone, conceptually. The system development fee is your auntie to enter the system, if you will. To be honest with you, I think it's, that one, yeah, that's, aside from the fact that it's a large number, there are, there are policy reasons why staff has made the recommendation that they've made, and I understand those. The trenching, you know, I sat here and talked about taking the paving out. And I understand that there's, in retrospect, I understand the difference between the trenching that happened for the sake of making sewer lines and the repaving that happened because it was a good time to do it when we were in there tearing the whole place up. But I said that I wanted the paving out, and I'm gonna make that motion. And that's $325,000. So that's, you know, I don't, like I said, I don't know what the, I don't know whether or not there'll be one, three, or eight or seven votes, but it won't be eight. It might be seven.
Or be eight.
Well, I don't know, where's that on the agenda? Somebody by the end of the night.
Well, I think it's important, Mr. Mayor, that Ward Alderman expresses his desires here so the rest of us can get a feel.
You know, the reality is this, and I try to be pragmatic and fair about all these decisions that we make. That, you know, when I got sworn in, I said to myself, I wanna leave office with a clean conscience and I wanna have a good answer. I want to leave office with a clean conscience, and I want to have a good answer when my sons, who at the time, there was only one of them, and he was 18 months old, when he comes to me later and says, what were you thinking? I want to have a good answer. I might have been wrong, but I want to have a good answer for what was in my head at the time. Pragmatism and fairness, what we are seeing so far, and I think it will likely be this way going forward, is these retrofit neighborhoods are different than the places that are being built today. The retrofit neighborhoods have no, by and large, have no other choice. They cannot individually go and fix their own problems because they were many times built on lots that are too small to replace the entire septic system. They were built under codes that would not have allowed them, if they were proposed today, they wouldn't be permitted. There's a whole host of reasons why the people in Monticello and other of these neighborhoods that have been retrofit cannot solve their own problem. And it's a health and safety issue, not a, it's driven by health and safety, not by the value of your home. I mean, I care about the value of your home, of course, because I don't live far from there, but, or anywhere, but it's driven by health and safety, and they can't fix their own system. And the other thing is that in Monticello in particular, but elsewhere as well, we're seeing people, you know, everybody's budget is tight, but in many of these retrofit neighborhoods that are coming before us, we're seeing people who can't simply go pick up more ships and make more money or change their budget because we dropped a sewer in front of their house. Some of these people didn't need it at all, and they're being dragged along for the ride, and some of them have done so, I say dragged, I don't mean to be pejorative, but some people have willingly gone along even though they don't individually have this problem yet. And others are, you know, others have been a little bit more critical of the project, and that's fine. But these retrofit neighborhoods, I suspect, are going to continue to be more modest, retiree, people who have lived in their home since, you know, for 25 or 30 or 35 years. We're not, you know, might I feel differently if we were talking about Legends Ridge? Yeah, I would. I'll be honest with you. I would feel differently if we were sitting here talking about Legends Ridge, but we're not. We're talking about, you know, the same thing happened for the county on the, just north of Fieldstone, Meadow Green. Okay? And the only reason we didn't get that one is because it drains, it drains a different direction. All right? Monticello became the city's responsibility, if you will, because we surrounded them to begin with, and then they drain naturally to our plan. In my view, what is fair to do is to bring the Monticello people in and make them as close to the same deal as we promised them to begin with six or seven years ago, and tread as lightly as we can upon the budgets of people who have been citizens of this community for twice as long as I've lived here, or longer. And that's where I stand on it.
Is Board Mill getting the same advantages?
If we waive the system development fees, it would be my intent to expect and agree that we would retroactively waive it for anyone similarly situated. So, I mean, I'm not trying to make, you know, we have, various iterations of this board have tried to make a fair and responsible approach to this thing while at the same time learning as we went that, you know, we had never done it before we did Highgate.
That's right.
So you do these things and you learn, and then, you know, you try to, you try to do it better when you do it the next time. And that's not to say I want to make better and better deals for people. I just want to recognize the situation that the people in Monticello and the other retrofit neighborhoods find themselves in.
Alderman Skinner, then Alderman Berger.
I've got a couple of points to make. Not only do we need to look at this retroactively on what debt we're going to have for things that we've already approved, but what about future annexations where there's no sewer where there are also extremely large communities to the south? Are we prepared to make the same deals with those communities that have a lot of homes in them? It wasn't too many months ago that we looked at the rate structure for sewer and water, and the increase was going to be so much at a million dollars that we had to spread this out over a number of years.
Four years.
Now, if we do this, are we going to add more and have to spread it over additional years? And the last point I have to make is, the people who buy homes that are on sewers should expect expense at some time in the future to hook up to a sewer. So they made a conscious decision to buy that property knowing that there could be costs in the future. I don't think it's fair for everybody that's already on the sewer to have paid all these other fees in the price of their home and then also subsidize these that are coming later.
Alderman Berger.
Good points. That's one of my concerns, too, is the debt repayment to Highgate and the other ones that we've done. I'm concerned about that and want to know where we would be. We have any figures? Would we have any idea of what we would have to do?
What's the question?
We'd go back and reinforce.
If you gave the fees back, it'd be $2,000 per resident.
I think it would be $779.
Yeah, $779 is everybody, all districts.
Oh, okay.
If you talk Highgate, it's $2,000, essentially 1919 times 29 properties.
Okay, so that was including...
$57,000.
I wasn't sure that included everybody. Oh. Money.
Any other comments?
Just one.
Alderman Peterson, yeah.
I would support deleting, waiving the engineering design cost because we had done that on virtually all the other projects here. And it came up for a vote, and I think I voted at that time to waive it, you know, but I still think, and was defeated. But I do think that that part of it probably to be, to fit with the others. We should do that. I would be reluctant, though, to waive the big money.
You know, I understand that. I mean, this is, I've been doing this for a long time, and this is probably the first time that I can remember that representing the ward created some tension between representing the ward and representing the city as a whole. I've kind of been waiting for that moment to happen, and I acknowledge that there are policy reasons why the community as a whole would rather see the system development fees remain in the assessment. That said, I'm going to make these motions one at a time so we don't have to parse, I'm just going to do them one at a time. I guess we can vote them up and down, Mayor, and I'm not going to make a motion with four parts in it and then try to start amending.
You don't think that?
I've got Alderman Barn Hill, then.
When we go down to item three, I know that we have made the promise and the commitment to the community that we would eliminate the engineering cost from the assessment district, whether it's policy or whether it's not policy. We sit in here and said we were going to do that, so I think we need to go in and follow up on what we said we would do. I think that, I don't have a, I don't have a problem that eliminates the cost of engineering. We've done that in the past. We told the citizens of Monticello that we would eliminate the paving or repaving cost. It's anywhere at $325,000, but yet it's $212,000.
No, no, no. So it's two different things.
Two different things.
The $212 is the resurfacing.
Okay.
Similar to what we do in neighborhood resurfacing. The $325 is essentially the trench repair, the individual sewer service that goes to the house and the trench repair and covering that happens there.
It's what you would see if you go into Boyd Mill or Hooper Lane or any of the other ones where the trench is. I mean, I know we just recently repaved Highgate, but, you know, go out to Country Road or Boyd Mill, they've got a patch that goes down through there. That's what that is. That was all.
And we did the resurfacing because we annexed Monticello at a time when the useful life of the roads was nearing the end of its useful life. And while we had them torn up, rather than patch the middle, we patched the middle and resurfaced. I think Mr. Wade is correct. We didn't mill it up. That might have, well, would have cost more, but...
But that resurfacing is consistent with what we do in a typical neighborhood street resurfacing, which is, the way it was explained to me is we were within a five-year range of probably needing to do that out there anyway.
You noticed...
And so we did it with this project, and that's why the city paid for that $212.
It just becomes more noticeable sometimes when you don't have curb and gutters in place. You wind up with that third, it's like roofing your house. At some point, you have to pull the shingles off and go back to...
Did you have any other comments?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, in keeping with what we were told, we've been told all along that all of the connection fees would be waived. That everything, what we were told was that all fees that state law would allow would be waived.
In fairness, Ms. Rand, I said that. I will make that motion, and the other aldermen will vote on it.
Okay.
I'm sorry if anyone misunderstood that I, that my motion had eight votes in hand or seven.
Well, no, no. And actually, I think if we, and I've tried to go back and look at this, and it's not available, but the June 9 meeting in 2009, I don't think you were the only one that said that. I think that several people on staff said that at that time, but, okay.
I'll worry about myself. Everybody else can own up to their positions.
Okay. I just have a couple other things. The additional pumps and the surveys, there is this document dated November the 19th from Building and Neighborhood Services that said that there were, there are some properties where the gravity connection is very tight. And at the end of this document, it says that there would be, that the city of Franklin would resurvey these areas, these homes, to see what they may need. And, you know, we have people that may have to, it's almost, I mean, well, it's just, we were told that that was going to be done, and then now you're saying that's not necessary. And I just don't understand how we got from it needing to be done to not needing.
I don't know that it needs to be done. I think everything we've seen has shown that it's, can be accomplished at first-floor gravity level.
Have you seen this? Are you familiar with this?
I have not seen that.
Okay.
But I've talked to the individual that worked with all the property owners, and he said it's close in some areas, but he's pretty knowledgeable, has looked at it, and I think that's an issue you look at when those individual properties are ready to hook on.
Well, and what Mr. Bridgewater told one of our residents was that the only way that they're going to be able to find out is to start digging. And it's basically if the calculations are incorrect, my understanding is the resur surveying would give an opportunity to make sure that there is some question about the calculations or this wouldn't have been necessary.
We've reviewed each case, and I don't know what the survey gives you, but a confirmation of that review. You know, you're going to have the circumstance you have to deal with in terms of hook on, and everything we've seen at this point shows that it should be able to be gravity service from the first floor.
Okay.
And there's no need to dig to find that out?
I mean, I don't... I'm just not sure the value added to the survey or additional confirmation.
My information from this is coming from Mr. Bridgewater.
Okay.
That's what he told me when he came out to my house and looked at my house. That's what he told some other residents. I'm going by what we were told by the city would happen, and it hasn't. And I'm just trying to understand why.
So I'd be glad to sit down with Mr. Bridgewater on that again and just review it again, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Let's let her finish her comment.
I'm sorry. I thought you were kidding.
Well, I just have a couple more. The lien status, I'm still confused about that. I understand what the, I read the document, the response, and so does this mean that the city will require that the assessment be paid in full when the property is sold?
No.
No.
We're getting to the same result, but a different mechanism.
Just no policy, but like you recommended this...
This actually works out maybe better because it does not require the city's involvement to lien on its face.
Okay.
Will be recorded at the register of deeds and run with the land.
Yep.
No matter, okay? And on its face, the lien will recite that it is assignable and that it is, it's binding upon the heirs, successors and assigns of the property.
Okay.
Now, any given private transaction can either choose to pay it off or not.
Okay.
Okay? There will be something that the two parties to the transaction need to resolve.
Right.
But I would think typically that those, I mean, that people would typically take it subject to the lien. It's not exactly the conceptual process that I had in mind. Turns out there's problems with that. Like I said, I'm not a real estate lawyer, but the good news is you don't need now to have the city involved in this private transaction.
Okay.
The city will not be requiring, the city is going to require that the lien be paid off 20 years later.
Okay.
That's...
Okay. Well, that's good. I like, that's great. I just didn't understand it. I got lost in the...
Steve, you don't mind us? We've got some other things to get to. We're going to take some, go ahead, please.
Okay. Okay. The other one is about the assessment, and I just want to understand, I saw that a lot referred to as in the relationship to property taxes, and I understand the assessment part of it, but it also says that it's due with the property tax. And property tax, so does that mean there's no interest the first year or the interest starts? So I was very confused by when, okay, the assessment is set after the first year, and then the interest starts then, so there's no interest if you pay it off in full the first year?
If you, yeah, anything you, say you paid a few months of payments, and then you decide to pay it all off before September.
Right.
At that point, whatever you've paid, even the interest that you've paid would be applied to that total.
Gotcha. Okay.
So it's for that initial payout.
Okay.
After that, if you paid it off, whatever interest you paid, you paid, but...
That first year.
There's sort of this grace period that you had between now and, I think, end of September. Is that right?
Well, it depends on what the district is actually, because the...
Yeah.
...end of February, so...
Okay.
Okay. And then, my last thing is, at what point will the penalties be charged? When and at what rate will the penalties be? And, I mean, at what point, if it's not paid, are they looking at their water being turned off? I mean, I just think that people need to know upfront what the deal is.
Penalties for what?
If non-paying it?
For a month? Yeah. Because when you get your water bill, you know, if you don't pay after a certain time, then your water gets turned off. Is the assessment the same?
It's, you pay it all. Good. Steve, do you want to come?
What she's asking, I know it's on the same bill, but it doesn't have...
What you're asking, is that attached? In other words, if you paid the water bill, you still keep the water on and not pay the assessment part?
And is the assessment going to be such to the same penalty as the water bill?
That's a good question.
The way the ordinance is written right now is that if the assessment loan is not repaid in a timely manner, that it's due in full at that time. That's what y'all approved at this point.
You mean it's on demand? Like accelerated?
Yes.
The whole thing?
That's what you approved at this point.
I can't.
You mean if someone's delinquent on their water bill, are you going to demand payment of the lien in full?
No, no, no.
Okay.
If they're delinquent on their assessment, it's due in full. That's what state law requires. And then the ordinance really has a foreclosure on their water bill.
But that's, so if someone is late with paying their water bill, a part of which is the assessment, then the entire principal is accelerated and due?
That's what it's...
That's what, I understand that's the way the...
That's why I risked it.
Well, I ain't a big fan of jacking people up when they're five days late with their water bill.
Well, I don't. It's not bad, Dave.
It's like 15.
We work with folks now in terms of late payment, but we've got to also comply with the state law in terms of an assessment that's due, so...
What does the state law hold us to for the assessment if it's a delinquent?
That's what Shawna just described.
How many, what's the leeway?
It doesn't really give you that. It's just if they don't make payment, then it's immediately, you giving them a monthly option is really not contemplating so much. It will allow you to do that, but it's kind of like an afterthought. Generally, the law provides that this payment is due upfront, all of it. But if you want to give them a monthly payment, you can do so, but as soon as they're delinquent, the full amount is due, and then we work close.
Well, I, for one, don't want to be running a credit card company where we double their interest rates and demand it all, so...
So are we allowed to... So, are we allowed to?
Come here, what?
I'm sorry.
You have to...
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, you can sit through, just go.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Rand. So Shawna, tell me about this again. So in other words, if the state requires us, yeah, come on up here, I need to talk to you. If the state requires us to call, does the state actually require us to call that due?
That's what the state law provides.
And, but you're saying the state doesn't give us a timeline for that specifically? So can we put our own timeline on that?
Generally, we do, we do 30 days, and then we give them a notice for an additional 30 days. That's how we do with the water bill. So they technically get 60 to 90 days before we actually will do anything.
But let's say it happens.
Yeah.
Can we unwind it?
What do you mean unwind it?
Well, if state law says that the minute that they're delinquent enough, whatever it is, that the entire lien is accelerated and due, that's going to be a situation where either the homeowner has been out of town, or they're broke, okay? Can we unwind that acceleration so that we don't compound this problem for either the new purchaser, the short sale buyer, the existing homeowner? Can they get back, can they get back where they were before they became delinquent?
I think that that would be within your discretion. You'd have to take it as a case by case, and the board would have to decide. I mean, it would be your case.
It's what you're owed.
You have to decide what to do with that.
So is the reason that this is, the payment is due this way, is it because it's an assessment district? Because obviously, that's not the case.
Yes, solely because it's a special assessment.
And that's put on... Okay, send us that, if you don't mind. Because I don't, I don't recall that we specifically talked about that part of it.
Last comment, and then we're going to wrap this up.
Because I'm just not comfortable with that. I mean, we, we have to give them some way to get back in the game without, you know, meaning like the bank and calling that loan due. Because that's, you know, I'm just not comfortable with that. We have to figure out some other way to do that.
So if they haven't paid the water bill part, we're allowed to turn the water bill? Since this is a special assessment?
The special assessment has to be with their water bill. They're not the same, they're not, they're not...
I know, so...
...to collect on a special assessment is foreclosure. We have no right to turn their water off.
For not paying...
For not paying special assessment, they're, they're separate issues. You cannot...
So people would have to mail in a partial payment, saying I'm paying for water, but not for sewer?
Or not for assessment.
For assessment.
Or not for the assessment.
Unless we somehow have two separate bills.
No.
No.
Uh-uh.
Okay, moving on. Number six, discussion regarding leak adjustment issues, Royal Oaks Apartments.
More water.
Water. Can we get, get out of water issues?
All right, this is another one as a follow-up from two weeks ago. We've attempted to answer questions in terms of costs associated with the, with a leak adjustment, and in specific, the requests made by Royal Oaks Apartments. I will give you a little bit of an update. We calculated this leak adjustment, and I think we gave you a different number last time. We ended up combining the two months of bills, the December 30 billing period and the January 30 billing, January 30, 2011 billing period. We've combined those and then applied the policy, so that makes the credit, we think, would be appropriate, given the existing policy, that raises it up to just under $4,900. And I think it had been around $3,900 when we talked to you two weeks ago. So we did apply that, I just want to make sure everybody knows that. We've looked at that, we, I won't go through all the questions, but we've tried to address that, and I, I think, meeting folks halfway on that difference of average bill to the leakage is pretty fair and pretty generous. I don't know of any utilities that do more. I know there are many that do far less, and I think that that is an appropriate policy and practice there. In terms of the notification, we tried to provide you with some level of effort involved in that, and it's pretty significant when you get above, when you get lower into the 200% or lower, and we're talking something like, an estimate of, I think, 1,800 to 1,900 notices in a month could potentially be taking place. That's pretty challenging. That percentage sounds high, but the dollar amount is really not as large, especially when you're talking about a typical residence, and if somebody does much irrigation at all, you'll get there when you get into the warmer weather months. The promise that I think is out there to consider in the future, to just think about, the new customer service software that we're in the process, the process of implementing that will probably be in place by the end of this calendar year, I would estimate, has some capability for folks to put in a designation of self-notification. They can give us an email and say, if it's a certain percentage up, I'd like notification. Now, the companion to that is another project that we're working on, on the, on the metering side, which is a advanced metering technology, which provides us with the opportunity to get notice through wireless communication of what's, what a meter read is at a given time. So we can have that kind of real communication going on that could allow us to have that kind of trigger and, and send a notice via email or robo-call to a citizen without the extreme demands that it might place on staff. That's not there today, that's probably a couple of years out till we're there, but that's something that we see, the new software we've already purchased, and the future advanced metering technology together giving us. Mark and Clay have worked on the details of this more than, more than I have, so they may be able to address specific issues, and I don't know if there's other components we should address, or just open it up for any other questions the board has.
Well, I just, you know, we talked earlier, and, you know, as you said, somebody's got to pay for it. And we've gone from 3,900, is that correct, to 4,900, adjusting this? So we've gone up another, we've gone up another thousand. You know, I, I know we need to possibly talk about our policy, I mean, if the new advanced technology, the meter reading, is coming, but it's going to be here for two or three years, we might want to talk later about readjusting our policy to notify commercial entities at a lower overage, rather than waiting for 50%. But with that said, I think where we are, I don't see how we can, you know, I think Dana said it earlier, you know, representing the ward and those in it versus what we have to do for the city, and where we have to stay with our policies is very important. And at the same time, wanting to help you, because you all got caught in a funny situation here with the holidays, and the plumber, and the, you know, the utility, you know, identification of the utilities, and I understand that. But if we can, we've adjusted it another thousand.
What's the time adjustment?
And...
It's what?
It's the time adjustment. It was 900 for December, it was 3,800 for January. It's the time adjustment as they're talking about, just from the...
Let's, let's wait just a second.
The first category had been on the big month, we applied it to both months. So when we talked two weeks ago, it was 3,900, it's now 4,890.
Why don't y'all come up and sit down, and tell you all, we're going to give you a couple of minutes each, and...
Let's talk about this stuff.
I'm Connie Proctor, I'm the CFO for Royal Oaks Apartments. We were in here before, we discussed with the two adjustments. There was adjustment for December and adjustment for January. That is the two adjustments that was discussed with me. One was discussed, they were both discussed with me in January.
Okay.
And they were $4,800. So there's not been any increase in adjustment.
Well, when we talked about it last time, I think we addressed more the big month, the other month. Either way, applying the, the policy to the two months of bills gets us to this just under $4,900 worth of credit.
Right, which is the same thing we, was told to me on the telephone in January.
Okay.
So that's all I'm saying, there's not been an increase to us from what was told to us on the telephone.
It's the same policy, but applied to two months.
Right, I mean, that's what, that was what was told to me in January, so nothing, that's not changed. That's, that's all I'm saying, it's not, it's not changed. I was still looking for, I think there was a question asked last time about, how much of this 10 million gallons, 800,000 average, did not go through the sewer system? What is the savings to the city on that 800,000 gallons? And I don't see that in here. Also, I don't see in here, how many phone calls you'd have to make at 250%? I see 200%, and I see 300%. Well, what is it at 250%, which is what your policy is? So what, how many phone calls would that have been? Because, and here it is 200, and it gives 300, it doesn't give the 250. So how many phone calls would that be?
Well, we do it at 250 now.
I understand.
And we don't make phone calls, we send letters.
In January, I received a phone call.
In January, you called us, didn't you?
No, I called you in December.
Okay.
In January, I received a phone call when it was a million gallons.
I think we do make calls.
I think it's both, Eric.
It says written, but it, I mean, it's a phone call, it's always been a phone call, it's been a phone call for 21 years, so...
Okay, there can be calls when we're investigating. Typically, we send letters.
But I don't, I don't know how many phone calls you would have made, or how many notifications you've had made at 250, since you only gave the numbers for 200 and 300, so what would be at 250? How much the city, how much of the water bill is, is the city not, what is the expense to the city for 800,000 gallons of water that didn't go through the system? There's no expense there. Is that being considered in this?
That's in part why the 50% policy is in place.
Can I ask a question, Ms. Rand?
I mean, I don't, I'm not sure... We got a question right now.
Just kind of explain in a few words, what do you want?
Well, I'd like to have the, the 800,000 gallons of water that didn't go through the sewer system, I'd like for that not to be charged to us, for one thing.
800,000 gallons?
They did not go into the sewer system.
This is the sewer adjustment?
The sewer, the sewer...
The sewer adjustment number is on here, and it's $4,131, isn't that right?
That would be if the entire overage amount on sewer was weighed versus policy. So the column that says adjustment sewer D above is the sewer adjustment by policy, the one below would be weigh the entire overage on sewer, which would be $4,131. An additional $2,800 roughly versus policy would be the difference.
But if we just did sewer, if we didn't do anything on water and we just did sewer, the number would be the 4,100 or the 4,800?
The 41...
4,100. So we're actually giving you more than if we just did sewer.
Right, but, I'm sorry, I'm a little, I guess maybe I'm a little greedy here, but...
That's why I want to know what we're trying to get here.
This is what I'm talking about, we've got this, this policy that you have.
You're asking for both. You want the adjustment, and also the...
And the... Yes, that would be great.
Which would take us to somewhere around $11,000.
Well, no, actually, it says here 7,000. Is it Franklin, the Franklin, the property owner of Franklin, it was over $7,000, what is that?
Well, actually, no, if we added the 4,100 to what we're already offering, that would take you up to about $9,000.
On the page one, where it says, the financial impact would be $7,000.
Yeah, that $7,000 includes half of the water and all of this overage on the sewer.
Which is what I'm asking for.
Alderman, do you have any other comments?
Well, I mean, I would just, it, to me, it's fairly simple. We give the credit, that offsets the sewer, and you can either do the sewer not running through there, or you can do away with the, with the credit, one of the two, but not both of them.
I understand that.
Not both of them.
I understand that's your...
And you're getting a better deal.
I understand that, that's...
By having the, by having the credit, then you would, if we take the sewer off for whatever number it is, that less, whatever the average has been for the last four, five months. So if you run, what do you, 10 million gallons?
No.
What'd you run?
It was a million gallons of water, 800,000 gallons of water that was lost through the leak, averaged.
And you're getting a credit for that. But you're not getting to have it taken off by not having it run through the sewer.
Okay.
If you want it not run through the sewer, we'll just take the credit off then, and you can calculate it on running it out through the sewer. It's, you know, it's somewhere, somebody has to pay for running it through the meter.
Right.
And that has to be paid for. Now, you could, I guess we can charge the Monticello?
Well, one reason why I'm down here is so this doesn't happen to anyone else. We've got everybody that's a customer of Cedar Franklin, that, I don't want them to have to come down here and spend two nights down here, arguing over this water bill, when we have done this. We have, we, there, there's, there's a million gallons of water that was lost, excuse me, 800,000 gallons of water, and one month lost, 200,000 gallons of water the previous month lost. A phone call, a 36...
It wasn't lost, we know exactly where it went.
It was lost, it was, it was lost. It was lost. The city cannot use that water.
It hasn't been paid for, and to that extent, it's lost.
The city cannot use that water.
No one's...
So this summer, when we don't, we're having a drought, and we don't have water, that's, that's, you know...
There's not a million gallons in a bank, we, we make water by...
I understand that, I, I, I appreciate that.
We can only...
What I'm saying is, I'm down here so this doesn't happen to anyone else.
There's nothing we can do to prevent it from happening to someone else. When, when water pipes break, they're going to run. And sometimes, we're going to catch it, and yours happened to be big, okay? It happens in front of my house, it might be 15,000 gallons, it might be 100,000, but it probably won't be a million. Your pipe was big, and we're wrestling, but there's no way to prevent this from happening.
There's no way to prevent this from happening, but if I had received a phone call on December the 7th, we could have saved a lot of water. And that's what I'm saying, as commercially, we...
We cannot support the man-hours that would be required to monitor the system at this point with that level of attention.
It says here on the back that 1,500 customers would be contacted if it was 200%. Of that 1,500 customers, how many were the commercial accounts? How much, how many gallons of water are we just, are we talking about? Because it doesn't say that. It also doesn't say what your phone calls are at 250%. Those are still information that I think we need.
And at 300%, it would be 977. So at 200, what we're actually doing is probably between, is probably about 1,200.
But why aren't we not receiving the information? When, why didn't they give us the information based on the policy? Your policy is 250, why don't we have the information on 250?
You didn't get it. That's where you used to set the policy. We had those two thresholds, and that's what we set.
I see what you mean, though, you haven't given the number.
Right, so is it, is it 50?
Let me interrupt there. Let me interrupt here. I think that the question is, I thought you'd already been talking...
I have, I have a question.
Okay, let me ask my question is, I think the question I want to put in the back of your mind is, do we want to send this back to Budget and Finance to have the policy removed, reviewed? So, that's the only question I'm asking, so go ahead.
Here's my, here's my question, okay? Right now, what are the two bills that you're holding?
No, I'm not holding, I paid my bills.
All right.
I don't hold bills.
All right, we can, I can, I can see your struggle with this.
It's 14,000 dollars.
All right, 14,000.
Estimate 14,000 dollars.
The adjustment that's been offered, the adjustment that the policy would suggest occurs is.
4,900.
4,896 dollars and 95 cents.
4,000 what?
4,896 dollars and 95 cents.
So that's, that's where we're, that's where the policy would take us. So you'd be down to nine grand, more or less. Okay? What you would rather have happen, however, is that plus, you want 800, you want 80, it's 80%, right?
The sewer is another fourth, if we did all the sewer, there'd be another $4,000, is that right?
Well, not quite.
Correct. So that would take it.
It's.
All right.
Can we, we can split the difference on the sewer?
And what's your, what's your average, what's your average bill?
$2,000, or 2,200 there.
Because what we're doing right now is we're taking the average bill, we're taking the leak bill, and we're taking that difference and we're splitting it halfway with the customer.
And for many times, that's, that works because it's $30 and not $6,000. I get it, I understand. I just wanted to have the actual numbers as opposed to, at the end of the day, that's what matters to the rate paid. Now, I mean, I say again, here's the, here's the problem. The City of Franklin either bought or made that water at a cost. And, yeah.
And what is that cost?
Well, if you just do the direct cost purchase in transportation, it's about $4.41 per 1,000 gallons, or $7,183.89.
So the bottom line is, the adjustment that you're asking for is less than the cost of the water. Where you want to wind up is less than the cost of the water that we actually bought and resold, or made, you know, treated and resold. You see the bottom line with that?
I see that.
Okay.
I understand. But I don't want someone else to have to sit down here for this.
I'm sorry.
That's what we're, that's what I want this policy change.
This conversation is never going to prevent that.
There's got to be a change that can be made, that the phone call is made sooner. I know 1,500 phone calls is a lot of phone calls for people, but when you're talking about commercial, how many of these 1,500?
That's 50 phone calls a day.
Of these 1,500 phone calls, how many are commercial?
I don't know, but that's 50 phone calls a day, all day long. And I've seen the girls make these phone calls, and they're, they're not done in a minute.
I know.
All right, so you're talking about basically a half a day of some staff member's time every day, all month long, all year long.
Can I make another suggestion? The bill was ran, ran on December the 7th. I received the bill on January the 3rd. Luckily, I called earlier, or we'd be even further down the hole. Is there any way to get the bill to the customer sooner, instead of waiting 28 days to get it to the customer? Maybe that would, that would hit with part of this. That would cut down the amount of days we're sitting with a leak and not knowing it.
I'm, I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not going to vote for something that takes the result below the cost.
Yeah.
Okay? Because, because some of that water got through the meter and went where it was supposed to go. So I can't, I can't bring myself to give away water. Having just said I'm going to vote for a whole bunch of giving away. I can't give, I can't give away a million, a million or 500, I mean, there's a cost that we incur. And some of your residents actually got, I mean, I take it there was actually only a brief service interruption for the residents. So the residents got the water that they needed.
Yeah, my 59 tenants that are in this phase receive water.
Okay.
No pressure problems, no nothing?
No, sir. Which is very odd, usually when you have a leak and a break, because we've had leaks in the past, and we've always had the, you can tell the difference in pressure, and this time it did not happen. I don't know why it didn't happen.
What's, what's the difference between the cost of the water and the adjustment that we're offering?
Yeah.
The actual cost of the water and the.
About 2,200 dollars?
My motion would be to split. I mean, that's, that's, that's more than.
My question for the board would be, do you want to change your policy? And that's, let's make a deal all the time. Exactly. And I, I just, I ask you if you want to go down that path, or you want to direct this to a different calculation.
I'm going to, we're just going to send it back to Budget and Finance and let them discuss.
Unless you don't want to change the policy.
Unless you don't want to change the policy. If you don't, you better speak quickly.
This is not a place.
I'm not on that committee, am I?
No, you're not. We're going to ask you to be a special. Two years ago, we ended up back at the same place.
Last comment, Clyde.
So why send it back?
I don't, I don't see any reason to send it back.
Maybe not.
Is it on tonight's agenda?
Yep. It's not.
It's on next month.
You tell us what you want to do.
Vote on it next month. I don't, I mean, I agree, we're, you know, I can't be, we can't, we, I agree, we cannot trade. We can't, we can't be horse trading every month.
I agree, we can't change policy.
Can I change it every time?
If you think that's fair.
Well, as much as I want to do this, I agree with the board, I can't see how we can change the policy.
No, we could change the policy.
Well, we can change the policy, but make an exception, and, you know, I want to do.
Well, I had a leak, and I had to pay for mine, so.
Okay, moving on then. Moving on then, we'll not send it to Budget and Finance. Next, there was a note about a request from Mr. Dryer with your name beside it.
Yeah, I don't know if Mr. Dryer's here, or if he, I assume he was notified.
Nobody's.
Moving on.
You did talk to him.
Was he notified at the meeting? Told it?
What does it say?
Anybody, can anybody verify that he was informed?
I don't know. You talked to him about his bill.
Talked to him about his situation, but not that.
Okay, then what, can we roll that to the next work session and notify him that he'll be on the agenda?
Number seven, consideration proposed ordinance 2011-07. An ordinance to update of the City of Franklin road impact fees is presented in the 2010 Duncan Associates Road Impact Fee Study dated November of 2010.
We basically provided you with a draft ordinance to look at as a follow-up to our previous conversations on the road impact fee updates. This is taking the prior recommendation, which had been the arterials plus right-of-way costs as a formula which had been calculated in there, and phasing it in over a three-year period. And so that takes that and phases it in three stages. It just so happens that first stage, that one year, year one phase-in, is essentially the equivalent of the arterial only, the arterial without right-of-way. So that sort of answers that question, if you want to look at that, that, that approach as well, which had been an option that had been discussed. And then basically splits the difference the rest of the way to implement it in year two, and then fully implemented by year three. This is put out there for that purpose, for discussion. There had been anticipated, I think, taking something back to the stakeholder group that we met with at the end of November. So there's still more process to go here to, to close the loop with those folks as well, and just have this here for any discussion and direction from the board.
Alderman Peterson.
The first thing is that recently, we have found several projects that have been considerably under the projected budget. And so my question was, is it possible that factoring in or putting in these new, these new amounts per whatever it is, I don't know, linear foot or whatever mile, might make a difference in this? Having said that, though, I do not believe that I could support the arterial with right-of-way, which means that, for instance, on a single family, you're virtually doubling, virtually doubling the amount. And on many, on many others, you are more than doubling the amount. So considering the economy now and the development community, I would, I would just make it simple. If we do the arterial without the right-of-way, go ahead and put that out there at one time, because we are, we are changing this every three years. It's not every five years, but every three years. And then look at it three years from now and see where we are. Because this, this other, going with the arterial with right-of-way and, and changing almost everything, at least double, I just could not support it this time.
And the process is, if you could just clarify the process, it goes back to the stakeholder.
What I, what I thought, and I want to get the board's feedback on this, is that we would take some sort of ordinance for people to respond to. We would give back to this, this stakeholder group and the community overall and say, here's the draft ordinance that the board is looking at, and have kind of a work session with that group again, kind of like we did in the end of November, and get their reaction. They know where this is going, and, and then it would ultimately come back to you then for, for decision.
I will support moving forward to the next stakeholder.
They were told at the, at the end of that meeting that we would do it again.
Right, so what do you want to put in front of them? Do you want to put this draft? Do you want to make modifications, you know, like Alderman Peterson suggested or others? We're glad to do it, we just kind of want to know what you want us to put on the table for that discussion.
So I think last time, we decided that what we wanted to send forward was something that had broken into three years, and so.
And that's where the doubling comes in. Doubling it, if not more, and I just cannot support that at this time. And if we take out the right-of-way, now, taking out the right-of-way, though, would also change some other pieces in here, because they, it would roll, it would roll that through. And then look at it, you know, because we, we did update it three years ago, and we, I guess if we continue in this same pattern, we'll update again in three years, and.
So the question is, why do we go forward to the stakeholders group?
That's what I think.
Well, we won't.
Go ahead.
We won't have the study and the in-depth study that we've had on this in three years, will we?
No, we did, we did the same type of thing three years ago.
Three years ago, we did do it three years ago.
Yeah, so I mean, if, if, if you do want to look at this again, following the policy that's been established, yes, we would do that same in-depth type of study.
Three years.
We can do that whenever you.
But we, but we have had, we have had greater gaps than three years.
Probably. There's been a five-year at one point. But there's been phase-ins too, is my understanding, in the past too, where you've taken multiple years to phase in what's been recommended.
To get up to the, to get up to 100% of whatever we said we wanted it to be.
But between study to study, yeah, there's, there's been more gaps than three years. And in this case, you know, we started this process, I believe it was back in, maybe about this time last year. So by the time we go through this whole process, get it approved, if we do it over a three-year period, I mean, you're going to be talking about closer to four years anyway before.
Wait, wait, wait. We voted virtually one year ago this month to make the change?
To start, to start this process.
No, 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 I'm sorry. We voted, we voted three years ago to change the, because it was after I was an Alderman, and I've only been an Alderman for three years and what, three months? So it has, it has not been much longer than three years ago since we made the last addition, you know?
Right, no, I'm just saying that, to answer Alderman Barnhill's question of, we started, we started the study in early 2010. By the time we roll through this three-year plan like, like what was directed to the staff, and then start a new, a new plan, or I mean, a new study, you would be close to four years, probably, yes.
Well, why did we start this other one so soon? You waited less than, you waited two years then to start?
Because this, well, I guess it, and I'm not sure how the policy is worded, but is it when the, when you want to study it again? Is it when you want to, to change the impact fees? Because the study was in 2007, the last one, and then this, the one that we, or currently in is 2010. So it was a three-year period between the studies.
Okay.
So what, go ahead. How much did we pay for this last study?
I can look, I can look.
You know what, I was going to guess that, whatever you said, so I think that's.
Just give me, give me a few seconds and I'll find it. It's somewhere in there.
Other than Alderman Peterson, we feel comfortable forwarding this to the stakeholders group, and then we can modify it whenever it comes back to us?
Yeah.
I want to tell you, I mean, and I, and listen, I am not a person that's normally thought
of as a supporter of developers, but I think this is terrible. I mean, really. This, this is doubling or more than doubling. I may be the only person that feels that way, but I think it's right.
Are we phasing this in over a three-year?
Wait, you do, you do a little bit of it the first time, and then you go another, you know, 40%, and then another 40%?
As the economy improves?
Well, we hope.
We hope.
We don't think that we can improve 40%. I don't think so.
The bottom, the bottom line is, we either build a road and pay for it, or we don't build the road, so.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, go ahead.
Could I say, this is the arterial with the right-of-way. If you do the arterial without the right-of-way, I don't object to that.
Well, the right-of-way's got to come in there.
No, but we, but, but here's the thing, though. We, we reimburse them, whereas before, they had to give, the developer that the, that the property went through, I mean, the road went through, had to give us 30, 30 feet of right-of-way. They're not having to do that anymore.
All right, you want to make a comment?
Just, just one quick. I know that we are going to take this back to a representative group to have some input. And one of the items that came up that, that wasn't included here, and I know Charles Carlisle from the Bristol Group that's contemplating a development, had talked about also including apartment building, townhouse, condominium developments in the site plan part that would offer, you know, the, the provision to, to pay fees that were applicable when that plan was approved. Detached single-family dwellings pay as you go, but commercial developments and developments that include apartment buildings and condominiums are somewhat similar and should be applicable when the site plan is approved. And we just, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that that has been something that has brought up and looked at here recently as we reviewed it.
So again, it would be at site plan, if they've already done site?
They have an approved site plan, then the fees that are applicable at the time that it was approved would remain valid.
Okay.
All right.
Two minutes.
Less than that.
Steven Butter.
Charles Carlisle, Bristol Development Group. If I understand the way it's worded, I think if, for approved plans, it allows those developments to pay the existing fees. And I think there's also a provision for properties or projects that are in the pipeline. It gives them till July 1, 2011, to submit for site plan approval and still pay the existing fees. And what I talked to Vernon about is, the way that's defined, it defines it as non-residential property, which is all commercial property, but it doesn't include condominium or apartment properties, which are, for all practical purposes, they're like commercial in the way they go through your process. So I just wanted to see if you decide to go forward with this, if you would expand that definition of non-residential to include multifamily as opposed to single-family. So that was the distinction.
I guess I have a question. If you're talking about in the pipeline, does that just mean it's been submitted to the planning department?
Well, no, the, I believe the way it's worded, it says that.
I read that.
Any property that's submitted prior to July 1, 2011.
But let me tell you, submitted and being approved are two entirely different things. You can go a year without getting, you know, from the first submission until you get approved.
Right. Let's see.
So that's something to think about. That's something to think about.
In the ordinance, in that, what's that? Paragraph nine, it does say submitted. That was some of the discussion that we had previously, that as a developer or a property owner looking at planning, that they need to know what the impact of those costs will be. So any that are in the pipeline, meaning it's submitted, that that had been discussed previously.
It provides for a noun at submission.
Right. And again, we're, we're going to take this back and get more input and bring it back to you.
That's totally different from being approved, you know, and, and as I say, that timeframe on submitted and approved, you know, it may, it may front-roll just the regular way.
We'll go back and check that, but I think we had provided some similar kind of, like last time you did this, you provided.
But, but.
And we may engage the amount of discussion we want to have, maybe have another session on it or something, but let's move on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're not deciding this tonight.
No. Okay, number eight.
24,800.
Discussion.
Well, wait, right before we. Could we have them bring us those numbers on the projects that we have just recently bid and, and get, send them to?
We'll look at that. The only one I'm aware of for sure is McEwen.
Right, McEwen is the only one that was.
I'm not sure that there's any others that.
Okay, what about 96 and Royal Oaks?
What about it? I mean, it was included in the.
Was that?
Was that one that was sent, or was it the projection on that?
We sent this information to them, like I said, this was over a year ago, and I believe we had the final bill well over.
Did you?
We had the final bill well over a year.
Okay, so McEwen, that's another one right there.
McEwen would be the only one that would be.
And see if that does make a difference, since we're talking about this.
It would, but do you, I mean.
There may be some Austin asking those numbers.
How much money is it if it costs twenty-five thousand to do the whole thing? I mean, don't they just have a spreadsheet that they're putting it in? I mean, you know, ask them.
We'll ask them.
A form they just fill in.
Okay, moving on to number eight. Discussion and consideration of ordinance 2011-08, an ordinance amending the City of Franklin Minnesota Code Section 12-1202 relative to composition of the building and street standards, Board of Appeals. Mr. Gert.
And later, during the board meeting, you'll be endorsing hopefully the members to the Building and Street Standards Board of Appeals. We want to make one minor revision that wasn't caught when you originally passed this in the fall last year, is that one of the two architects, licensed architects, we want to have the option of appointing a state-licensed landscape architect, since they're intricately involved with development as well.
But that's only one of the two.
Just one of the two.
Moving on then. Number nine. Discussion and consideration of Resolution 2010-82, a resolution to establish a preferred parking program for green vehicles.
We're bringing this issue back to you. I think the biggest update, we had had two different parking proposals last time you looked at this, one that had come from the commission and one that had been updated with some staff input, and I think we focused in on that one that has come from the staff as the option with this, and there's been some other developments since then. I know Metro Nashville's adopted a program, and so I think Andrew's going to take you through a couple other issues and see where we go from there.
Thank you. We'll be very brief here. But the point of this is to kind of revisit the information that was presented in the last work session, just kind of clarify some things on the preferred parking program. So we'll get right into it. What's being proposed? It's pretty simple. The Sustainability Commission recommends designating a very minimal number of spots in downtown Franklin for fuel-efficient vehicles. The spaces would be identified with a sign, and we're really, we're really trying to get the point across, is to raise awareness, not necessarily to come down and create another layer with our parking restrictions. So the purpose of the program really is to raise awareness and kind of reward those who have made a conscientious decision to purchase fuel-efficient vehicles. And it certainly is an opportunity for Franklin to take the lead and to show some leadership in this. So what's the urgency? Well, we've proved, we'll go to the end of the earth in search of oil, and now that we're there, it's proving increasingly difficult and expensive to extract. Big picture, the red line shows U.S. oil production. You can see that it peaked in 1970 and has been steadily declining. The blue line shows the amount of oil that we're importing, and that's been steadily increasing. You may ask, where's this oil coming from? Most of it is foreign oil, as you can see on the pie chart.
Typically imports are foreign oil.
Exactly. So there are some local examples already occurring with the preferred parking. The Greenway Corporate Center in Cool Springs, as well as the new police headquarters, has some hybrid parking locations. In December, Metro Nashville passed a similar program. There's a little different. There's a fee involved for ten dollars, and for ten dollars, you can park at any meter downtown for no additional charge.
That's a bargain, because the ticket's eleven.
If you can find a spot downtown. Sometimes it's hard to do that. So several other.
First ticket's eleven.
Several other communities and private entities have implemented similar programs. The commission looked at some of those programs and their criteria and kind of wanted to fit it in what would be appropriate for Franklin, and they discovered the easier the better. So what constitutes a green vehicle? One that gets thirty-four MPG or greater. So how will it be identified? Unlike metros, there will be no permit or decal associated with it. Most vehicle owners are aware of their combined MPG, and if they're not, it's pretty easy to determine. So what, what types of vehicles meet this requirement? There are several. The new Ford Fiesta does. Nissan makes an Altima Hybrid that does. Lexus has a sedan. Volkswagen makes two. Audi makes the A3 diesel. The iconic Smart Car for two.
Two?
Lincoln. The Ford Fusion Hybrid. Honda makes several models. Motorcycles. Pretty much all motorcycles do. And of course, Toyota Prius. So we'll go back to the enforcement issue. The commission thought that it would best rely upon the honor code and not go the penalty route.
So does that mean there won't be any enforcement? Is that what you're saying?
It's left up for the conscientious citizens of our community to make that decision.
But you know, the thing is, the people in the know will know that they can park there without getting a ticket, and nobody else will.
Well, exactly. The out-of-town guests will not know.
What I'm trying to say is though, that that's not, you know.
It'll be on their conscience, and when they get to the pearly gates, they'll get to ask the questions.
Strongly worded green sticker on their car if they don't.
Yeah, go ahead and finish up your presentation.
I'll follow.
Go ahead and finish up your presentation.
Twenty-three spaces have been identified. There are nine hundred, approximately nine hundred publicly available spots in downtown. Twenty-three of it flagged. Six of each are in the parking garage. And just so you get a reference, the large circular flag, one is City Hall with the big white rooftop, and the other is Starbucks, so those can be your points of reference. Exactly. So the parking garages, out of the two, that would be twelve. And then the old police parking lot behind City Hall, there would be two there, two behind Starbucks, two behind the post office, and then five interspersed on street. So to come back and recap what's been proposed, implementing a preferred parking program, those vehicles, thirty-four MPG or greater, rely on citizens to honor this, identify a total of twenty-three spaces in downtown. And why are we doing this, again? To raise public awareness.
Questions? Alderman County.
This reflects three percent of the total parking places. Is that what I read?
Of publicly available spaces, yes.
What's the percentage of these cars registered in Williamson County?
According to the State of Tennessee Vehicle and Taxpayer Services Department, seven percent. And that includes the motorcycles.
Okay, I'll ask again. How many people in this room have one?
Drive up.
That will, that will fit.
Thirty-four.
I don't know if that's a fair question, because this is not a fair segment of the population.
No, it's not, but I would hope that the people who are here would be at least as responsible and reliable as anybody else.
I'm filling that blue bag up every week.
There you go.
Just one thing at a time.
Doing your part. Did answer a question.
Can we do this like for six months or a year and see what kind of usage? Not that we have to get real complicated with it.
It can certainly be.
See what kind of violation and what kind of usage, you know?
The only cost associated with the program is putting up some signs. And then you can monitor from there.
How many reserved parking places do we ought to have? If you go out in that garage out there now, half of that garage is reserved.
Not half.
Well.
A lot.
There's a lot out there that's reserved.
And they didn't start from the top down either.
No, they didn't.
All right, Alderman Burger.
I got a question here. What, we're talking about raising awareness and reward, we're rewarding these people for driving fuel-efficient cars. So we're raising awareness, so what purpose are we doing this for? How does it benefit the city?
Well, fuel-efficient cars have been deemed as a desirable initiative for the City of Franklin, something.
How does it benefit the city?
Air quality.
Air quality, it shows, it shows leadership for the city that we're actually conscientious, we're taking the lead in this. There aren't a lot of communities that have a similar program.
Can I speak to this a little? One thing you have to remember is, is we are one of three communities in the country right now that is building electric car infrastructure within, from Nashville to Oxford to Chattanooga. And we have a manufacturer in our community that makes one of those cars. So I think it's important that we show the commitment that the city makes to this too.
And let me tell you that this is in no way a silver bullet to sustainability, but it's just, it's just a simple part of the equation.
Yeah, I just, I'm trying to understand that the cities.
And the community's sustainability.
Buying for this because, you know, we've got, we have corporations and we have private enterprise doing this on their own parking lots. Why, I'm just asking, why the city should do this?
Well, part of your community's sustainability plan is embracing the increased number of more fuel-efficient, more environmentally friendly vehicles. And that's not just the city, that's the community, and one way to embrace that is to give some preference to those folks, give those folks an opportunity to have a parking space. That's the idea, is it's a relatively small gesture, but it shows some leadership and commitment to it.
Wonderful.
I think it's outside what the City of Franklin ought to be doing. I mean, it's worthy, but I think driving, if you make that choice for yourself.
That's your choice.
You know, good for you, that's great, but I just, I just don't think that local government ought to be.
Well, just because we haven't done something similar before, doesn't mean it's not right to try and do it in the future. I mean, like Alderman Skinner said, we can always, we can monitor and see how it goes, and if it just goes awry, it goes awry and goes terrible, then we can.
Well, I don't know how it's going to go terrible. I mean, there's neither enforcement nor.
Right.
But also remember, this is something the commission wanted. So I mean, it's, it's the commission through the city, it's their voice, I mean.
And also, I might point out that we did pass or approve the Community Action Plan, which includes developing a preferred parking program.
I'm not saying anybody has not done exactly what they were asked to do, and I think they've done, I think they have done exactly what they were asked to do and more. I just don't think it is the purview of government to be, to be involved in, at local government, to be influencing or attempting to influence that level of decision-making by the individual.
Please comment.
There may be, within the next two or three years for Williamson County, some non-attainment issues on air quality that have to do with auto emissions. So once that hits, then it affects the whole county as far as future development, industry, and so forth.
Alderman Peterson.
A problem that I have is that, you know, although there are some of the vehicles that cost less than others, on the most part, they cost a lot more than the car that I'm driving, and so I think if they're somewhat elitist in that sense.
Well, the Ford Fiesta's starting at like fourteen or fifteen.
That's right. I said there's some, I said there's some, but for the great majority.
The Toyota Prius is about twenty-two grand.
Motorcycles are four.
I think this is exciting for us here in the city to support and embrace this concept as, as we continue to look at our sustainability as a city that we have embraced, and our business partners and our, that's here making cars. I look forward to these types of things, and I think citizens who are future-minded and looking proactively will embrace this wholeheartedly. So good work.
Number ten.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration of. Oh, sure, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for what you're doing, and I like what the commission's doing, everything, but I have to, I have to dito what Dana said. I just have this problem, it goes back to some of these nonprofits and giving money and doing things. We get out of hand with where government is, and I'm thinking to myself, is it our job to promote this? You know, is the car companies giving us a kickback to do this? No, they're not. But what is the purpose in the aspect of, again, the jurisdiction of government and what government's there for?
You might, you might look at it as health, safety, and welfare for the community.
Absolutely. I know, but we can't tell people what kind of cars to buy and things like that.
You're not telling them that.
The purpose is to get the signs up so that next year we can put a ticket on the car. And then we're going to have the floodgates open with people who want their, I want the big old hog SUV parking place at City Hall.
Let's go to number ten then. Consideration of City of Franklin application for Phase One of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program in response to the May 2010 Presidential Disaster Declaration, FEMA, 1909, DRTN.
We basically applied the grant program. This is what we said we would do a few weeks ago when we met with you, and applied the dollars that are available based on the basic prioritization values that we identified as a board and have applied that and identified five properties that we think are appropriate to acquire, given the available dollars, the community impact, maximizing mitigation overall, with the top priority being the most damaged properties within that, within the floodplain. And I'll let Tom take you through the basics from there.
Tried just to not reiterate too much of what we've been over for the last few months, and as Eric said, we have identified five properties. Each of these properties is located in the floodplain and was substantially damaged in the May flood. The properties are located in close proximity, fairly close proximity to each other, actually on opposite sides of the Harpeth River, adjacent to the river. Two of the properties are along Thompson Alley, and three are in the Ewingville neighborhood. Maps are available, we can discuss specifics, but there again, we are respecting privacy and just giving you a general idea of where these properties are. There is, as Eric said, this is based on the priorities that we've previously discussed. As a reminder, the grant program is completely voluntary, and any of the property owners could withdraw their names or their properties up until closing. So we are considering other properties and preparing some, based on guidance from FEMA, preparing some alternatives, three to four possibly. Funds could be available if the expenses for the program are less also, and there's also the Phase Two to consider, that the deadline comes later. The exact properties that would be substituted depend on the amount of funds available. If sufficient funds become available, the next properties will be proposed for acquisition. Our proposal would be additional properties adjacent to those that we're already looking at along Ewingville Drive, just to continue that pattern, progress through the neighborhood. There are also a couple of other properties that have been nominated at a lower cost. So if the funds available could not allow us to acquire another property along Ewingville Drive, then we have a couple of other properties that we would propose also. And our recommendation is that we'll be back to you for a vote at the next meeting to actually submit to FEMA.
My disappointment is that it looks like right now we're really, we're talking about so few.
Well, you had to ask. Eric, yes. I mean, homeowner had to come forward and tell him he'll want to be bought on it.
And this is the dollars that have been made available sort of on a pro-lated basis across the whole disaster area. We have no idea what Phase Two will look like in terms of funding. In part, will be driven by how many other communities take advantage of the grant opportunity, and that's another unknown.
There's some potential there.
Yes, yeah, I would think there is, but we don't know.
Alderman Burger.
And we're not in the business of buying houses and buying properties and taking on this to the city where we have to maintain this and other expense, but from what I understand is it's a lot less expensive for us to do this than in the long run to continuously take our response teams, respond to the flood areas, and in the long run, we're actually saving a heck of a lot more money than we'll be spending in these areas when the maintenance is very low, it's only going to be mowing.
Right. This helps us long-term manage the costs associated, improves overall neighborhood quality, I think, by providing some more flood mitigation overall, and you look at the commitment that we have of really paying twelve and a half percent, you know, to be able to do the acquisition through the, through what's available in the grant. So it's a good opportunity to leverage dollars and remove future exposure and flood events.
Future expense.
And all of these are properties that face flooding issues, not just on May one type events, but much lesser storm events, they face flood issues regularly.
Which in turn costs us a heck of a lot more money than this, is what you're saying.
Absolutely. And it helps us sort of retrofit some older neighborhoods to better handle storms.
Can we be sure that this will be voted on next month and that we can get on with this? These people are hurting. They need their money.
And there's still a ways to go to get through the process.
It's not, it's not fast.
Thank you. Number eleven. Consideration of the filling of the at-large Alderman vacancy. Donna Billingsley.
It's your decision. You guys just have to make one, whatever your decision is.
In terms of your process, you know, this is on here for any other discussion or questions that you have. It's also on the voting agenda, too, if you'd like to provide direction there. It's up to you in terms of where you'd like to go, if you'd like to start a process. There could be, you know, some significant period of time involved in collecting applications, reviewing, interviewing, all that kind of stuff. If you want us to do that on your behalf, we need to start that process, which may take some time or whatever direction you want to set.
Or the process also could be that we elect to fill it by the regular election in October, but we have to make a choice of some type of plan and program. We can't just let it dangle there.
I'm in favor of us going through the interview process and appointing somebody in the interim.
Yeah, Mike liked his process so much.
Mr. Skinner has got kind of burned on this one.
You can say that.
Well, but the people made a decision to return the.
It was like.
All right, moving on. Not too many extra comments.
Is that, you know, there's been comments that this might give somebody an unfair advantage.
It does.
An advantage.
You don't think so.
But that depends on the job that the person does while they're in this trial period. So when, when, when the wording of the charter says shall, I don't think we have an option to play with this. I think we need to go ahead and deal with it.
Well, if we need to go around the table and just give an opinion, I can quickly give you mine.
You're going to vote on it, so.
We don't feel.
We need a motion in a second, and you guys will can discuss.
Yeah, we have to vote some direction tonight.
Well, we do. We fill it in October with the voters.
Whatever, you need to make a motion.
Tell us how you want to proceed with that.
That's where I'm going.
Number twelve. Consideration Resolution 2011-11, a resolution to rescind Resolution 2011-06 and to propose charter amendment adopting election at large Alderman by opposition.
Let me just touch base on this real quick. We just wanted to bring this back to you. Staff has no opinion, recommendation, anything on this at all, but we learned some more things as we looked at it, talking to our state legislators, as well as following up on some of the discussion we had two weeks ago, and I just want to share that information with you, and then the board can do what you want to do from there. One of the items we talked a good bit about two weeks ago was referendum. Should we do a referendum? How would we do a referendum? How would that work? And essentially, we've researched that, and the only way to do a referendum is through, as the back end or the last step in a city charter change. You can't do a referendum on the front end, you have to do it on the back end of this process, which would mean you'd go through the state legislature, get that approval, and then you could do a referendum, say this October, to decide this issue. and then you could do a referendum, say this October, to decide this issue. The other issue is the two-thirds requirement. The two-thirds requirement on the front end and talking to our legislators is really, that's not set in law, that's just their standard because the thinking being, you ought to have at least the vote on the front end you'll need on the back end to, to start this process.
They don't want to carry water that winds up getting spilled.
That can't get approved. And so I asked them, I said, you know.
And the two-thirds is required on the back end.
It is required on the back end by statute, so you've got to have the two-thirds, the constitution, if you want to do that, to approve any kind of charter change. Now, the question was asked, okay, there's some interest, and I don't know the full interest of the board, but some discussion about what if we used a referendum? And I ask our, if we committed to a referendum, I ask our legislators, what was their thought on that issue if the board said, we will commit to a referendum now, only, you know, as the, as the, as the only last step in approval, how would that affect their view of that? They said, you know, either way, a four-three is probably not enough in their view to carry the day.
Note yourself, ask interviewees how they feel about.
So if, but the decision was if it was more than that, say five-two with a referendum, that would be something they would likely be willing to carry forward because you're going to the people at the end of the day on a referendum to decide this issue anyway. So I, take that from what you want and you can take different action.
Question on the referendum. We send this, okay, let me just back up. If you do the referendum, if we, if we get to the point where we do the referendum, is the referendum that's going to go, would go on the October ballot, still going to cost an additional?
No.
All it would cost you is some cost for notice.
If you did a referendum outside of the regularly scheduled election, it will cost about twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars to do that.
We don't need to.
But if we added on October's ballot, what's the cost?
We'll have to pay the Tennessean to publish notice.
That's nominal on the grant.
Yeah, okay. Because we already have one scheduled, we're already paying.
You're using the election costs already in place.
That's what I thought.
Alderman Skinner.
I must have misunderstood.
Now, the, the margin of the positive decision in a referendum is just a simple majority?
Yes.
So one person over the nay votes?
Fifty percent plus more.
Well, I find it's interesting that state legislature won't deal with this unless there's a two-thirds majority that will accept a one person more.
That's because, I think it's because the constitution requires a two-thirds vote to have it passed on the back end. So like, like Alderman McClain said, there's no point in taking it there if they don't think a two-thirds vote would pass it on the back end. But since you're only requiring a referendum to ratify it, they'd be willing to let the people speak. But if you don't do anything tonight, I do want you guys to know that we have a live resolution. You guys passed a resolution four-three. We have to do something with it. We either need to rescind it and do something different, or we need to go ahead and send it on to our representatives and have them tell us yes or no. We need to do something with that resolution.
From what we've heard, it's not likely that four-three would go forward at this point.
I would not want to send it to the, what we have now, I think.
We have to rescind it then.
I, I think that's right.
If, if we don't want to send it.
Yeah, because that, that's not, that's not doing right by the.
All right, let's, let's move on to thirteen.
Wait, I want to say, though, about thinking about this, you know, back whenever we, whenever the city changed from all at, all awards to at-large, they spent some time discussing this and, and studying it, whereas we're just suddenly, like in a month, saying, or no, or less than that, saying, we want to do, we want to do this. Well, you know, we're getting ready to have to have a reapportionment whenever, you know, of the districts whenever, whenever the census numbers come out and everything for the wards, so it, it looks to me as if maybe this is kind of premature. I mean, although I, but we'll have to tell you, I do like the idea of the referendum much better than what we were talking about at first, and I, and I would strongly consider that. But in fact, it, it just seems like it's, it's a little premature to, to do that whenever we're going to be looking at things, and, and there are other things that, that we might look at, one of which is like changing the charter to say not, shall create vacancy because I've looked at Metro's charter and some others, and they have some specific guidelines for that. We really have several things that we need to investigate, you know, and so.
I would like to make some of those changes soon.
In some ways, it might be to bother them together.
Finish a little more discussion in, in the boards, because we've got four more items and we need to move on, and we're going to run out of tape. Number thirteen.